Be gracious heavenly Father God, thank you so much Lord for this and another day Lord that you've given us. God, thank you so much Lord for this everything that you've done for us today. Lord, thank you so much Lord for the weather that you've allowed us to have today. We come in now and ask that you bless this meeting, Lord every item on the agenda, Lord. Bless each and every one of the individuals that are in leadership for this city, Lord. Hallelujah, just bless this city abundantly, Lord. Rest all things you do gracious heavenly name.
Amen.
But allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's call the order, the regular meeting of the Court of Board Commissioners July 19th at 5 o'clock. With the roll call please.
Moore? Here. Reeves?
Here.
Knuckles?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here. First on the agendas to approve the June bills for payment.
Set motion.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Approve the minutes from the July 1st special meeting.
Set motion.
Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Ratify the mayor's signature on the Kentucky Department of Agriculture grant for fur ever friends spate and neuter program. Make motion.
Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Approve and authorize advertisement of bids for a pumper truck in the fire department.
I'm going to make a motion to re-advertise your bids.
Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Approve and authorize advertisement of bids for 95 gallons garbage cans and provide each residential home in Corbin city limits. Make motion.
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Approve and authorize advertisement of bids for two pickleball courts at the McBurney Center.
I'll make that note.
Second.
Reeves?
Are they already loaded?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Ordinance 2021-9 and ordinance establishing the regulatory license fee for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city of Corbin for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Ordinance number 21-2021-9 and ordinance establishing the regulatory license fee for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city of Corbin for the fiscal year 2021-2022. Whereas the city of Corbin Kentucky here in our true city is authorized to impose a regulatory license fee on the self-alcoholic beverages of each establishment bearing license to sell alcoholic beverages pursuant to the KRS 243.075 and the city of Corbin ordinance 13-2013 section 8 subsection KN. Whereas the city has reviewed the regulatory license fee revenues for the prior fiscal year as well as expenditure related to the additional police and regulatory and administrative expenses related to the self-alcoholic beverages in the city with a copy of income statement being attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. And whereas the city finds that the current regulatory license fees are reasonably estimated to somewhat reimburse the fee for the additional police and regulatory and administrative expenses related to the self-alcoholic beverages in the city now therefore bid or gain by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Corbin Kentucky as follows. Section 1, the regulatory license fee shall be 7% of gross sales of all alcoholic beverages sold by the brand. In the case of retail sales of packaged distilled spirits and wine, the regulatory license fee shall be 5% of gross sale. Regulatory license fee shall be 4% on gross retail sales of packaged malt beverages. Section 2, if any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason declared illegal and constitutional or otherwise invalid, such declaration shall not affect the remaining portions hereof. Section 3, if any provision of this ordinance is in conflict with provisions of existing ordinances or laws, it is intended to the Board of Commissioners of the city of Corbin Kentucky that the provisions of this ordinance shall govern and such provisions in existing ordinances or laws in conflict herewith are hereby rescinded first reading 719-2021.
You may have any questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is that on par with all other cities in state?
Lexington, for example, doesn't have this, but smaller towns do though. But the city of Lexington will collect their taxes from other avenues though that we may not have either or an increase in property taxes.
We just revert to say this over here.
Yes, because it's the same rate we already had.
I'll make a motion if we accept the ordinance.
Okay.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Yes. Hire Courtney Morgan as full-time dispatcher effective 7/12/2021.
She was the one that we did the emergency hour and we had to work through her. I like the motion we are.
Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Municipal Order 2021-1, a municipal order repealing municipal order 1-2013 and regulating salaries in the police department and promotions in the police department.
Municipal Order Number 2021-1, a municipal order repealing Municipal Order Number 1-2013 and regulating salaries in the police department and all promotions for the police department. Now therefore be ordered by the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the city of Corbin Kentucky as follows. Effective July 19th, 2021, the following shall occur in the city of Corbin Police Department. Section 1, Municipal Order Number 1-2013 is hereby repealed. Section 2, all salaries of all police officers of every rank shall be frozen at the current rate of pay date as of the date of July 19th, 2021. The only increase shall be 2% for each five years of service unless salary increases are approved by the Board of Commissioners. Section 3, all future promotions must be first approved by the personnel committee and then approved by the Board of Commissioners. Section 4, all resolutions orders and ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed, adopted this 19th day of July, 2021.
Make a motion to repeal.
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Municipal Order 2021-1, a municipal order repealing municipal... No, I'm sorry. Municipal Order 2021-2, a municipal order repealing Municipal Order 2-2013 and regulating salaries of entry-level patrolmen in the police department and setting the hourly pay increases for the promotions in the police department.
Municipal Order Number 2021-2, Municipal Order repealing Municipal Order Number 2-2013 and regulating salaries of entry-level patrolmen in the police department and setting the hourly pay increases for the promotions in the police department. Now therefore be ordered by the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the city of Corbin Kentucky as follows. Effective July 19th, 2021, the following shall occur in the city of Corbin Police Department. Section 1, Municipal Order Number 2-2013 is hereby repealed. Section 2, all patrolmen shall receive a starting wage of $12.75 per hour. Once field training is completed, said officers shall receive an increase of 50 cents per hour. Upon graduation from the academy, an additional increase of 50 cents will be given per hour. Section 3, the fall in pay scale shall apply to all patrolmen with up to five years' service. One-year service, $14.25 per hour; two-year service, $14.75 per hour; three years of service, $15.25 per hour; four years of service, $15.75 per hour; five years of service, $16.25 per hour. Section 4, all promotions must be approved by the personnel committee and then approved by the Board of Commissioners. Section 5, all resolutions, orders, and ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed, adopted this 19th day of July, 2021.
Make a motion to repeal the municipal order 2-2013?
Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Discuss giving firefighters compensation for having an EMT certification.
I asked for this to be placed on the agenda for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, just with the passing of the budget and there not being room this year for raises for the fire department. I thought that this would just be one way to help them out, give them a little bit of extra money for serving the city. By having an EMT certification, it's something that's not required. I think all of our firemen have it. It's something that they're spending time away from their families to obtain. And I think it would just be a small, small bonus that we could give them just to show our appreciation for everything that they've done. Especially over the last year, they were here day in, day out during COVID. They didn't take days off. We certainly appreciate them and I think this is just a small token of our appreciation.
I'm sorry, so what are you proposing? How much?
Well, my proposed amount, I think other cities it varies. Something that we could look at, I'm just hoping that up for discussion at this time. Across the state, as far as fire departments go, cities our size, our firemen are the lowest paid in the state. The starting salary for a foreman is $29,950, which is the lowest in the state. Now I know there are certain incentives that they have, they can make overtime and we certainly commend them for doing that and going above and beyond. But we need to be on a level playing field with other departments of similar size throughout the state. That way we can not only attract new firemen, but we can keep the ones that we have. We don't want to lose them to places like, you know, for example Somerset. Somerset makes about $5,000 more on the year. And that's certainly within driving distance for anybody here. So that's the reason I asked for you to put on the agenda. But I certainly welcome anybody's comments, if any of the firemen want to speak out or bury. I just think that there's more that we can do to attract new firemen and keep the ones that we have. Especially with everything that's went on over the past year and a half. So as far as an amount, Dan will pay us $500, it's just a one-time bonus. Richmond pays $832, it's a one-time bonus. So I think that's what I was proposing as far as an amount. I think we just need to look at what the budget is. I don't think the budget needs to be amended. But I think there's certainly some wiggle room in there to allow for. We've got 22, full-time and part-time. So I mean even if we did $500, it'd be a one-time $11,000 cost. Which on the grand scheme of things, it's not a whole lot. But to them, to their families, it could go a long way, so.
God, we do appreciate everything you all do. Thank you.
I think we can take this under advisement unless you all want to go ahead and vote on it, whatever you want to do. I think, I hope that you all know that we all appreciate you. If you don't know that, I apologize. You're gonna have a nice fire truck this year. I know you all have been wanting one for quite a long time. I wish that this would have been brought to our attention before we ran our budget numbers and worked these things out, but it didn't. Which then puts us in a situation, so. I think as far as your all certifications, I don't know that there's any fire department that's better certified in our area than our fire department. I mean you all go for multiple certifications, then you are able to use those talents and abilities to go and help not only Corbin, but surrounding communities. And we welcome your willingness to do that. I think the city is very generous to allow that to happen. And we're proud of you all. That's why we let you all go, because we know that you're gonna do a good job and you're gonna save people's lives. So I just wanted to say that, but I don't know, I don't know where this will go, but I'm glad that we're able to get this conversation out and be able to discuss it.
I would recommend that we do it as a bonus. I don't recommend it as a certification. Or some other word as a bonus, yeah.
You can do it as a bonus, that's illegal.
But you know, we do, and I'm not knocking them, they do a great job, but we pay for that certification. We pay for all the tests, everything.
All right, unless I give a motion, we're gonna take this under advisement and we can bring it back up next month if you all would like. I forgive us wanting to do it.
I think we should just take it up to next month and we can work it further and see what we can and what we can't do to have a better understanding and kind of move forward.
So there were some other things that you all asked for on your budget as well, is that correct? Is Barry here?
Mayor.
Oh, there you are Barry, sorry.
Yeah.
How much other equipment did you all ask for this year?
Martin's got it. You're completely...
They've asked for additional $15,000 for upgrading of the swift water rescue equipment stuff. And we took care of that and that's in the budget already. That was figured in.
Okay. All right. Does any, does any one of you all want to speak into this at all? Okay. All right, then we're gonna move on and next is Roberta Webb's retirement letter. I'll read that.
July 19th, 2021, Mayor Ceezy Rasmussen, Board of Commissioners, City Manager Marilyn Sam. Please let this letter serve as notification that I will be retiring effective July 31st, 2021. It has been my privilege to work for the city of Corbin and its citizens for over 27 years. I thank you and appreciate the opportunities that I have been given. While I've been blessed to work with many wonderful people, I am looking forward to spending more time with my family. Respectfully, Roberta Webb, City Clerk.
You don't even see the standard. Oh, she's holding it in.
I'm teasing. Roberta, you've been fabulous. Thank you for your many, many years of the service to the city of Corbin. I was so appreciative for your guidance. You know, you've guided us through the years and we really appreciate all the extra work that you put in with Tori and just the willingness that you, to work an unbelievable amount of hours through the years for your position. Nights, weekends, I know what you've done and I appreciate you very much. I know everybody else does too. So we wish you all good things in your retirement.
Now she can come work for me.
That'll allow them. No, not for three months. I'll take my retirement, but. I guess we need somebody to accept this, correct Bob?
Set motion. Second.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
No.
Yes, we can't hold her hostage sadly. All right. Next, approve closing of Main Street for Deb Rock.
Make a motion.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Well, I have a question since I'm on the Chamber of Commerce board.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. City Managers Report.
Mayor, I just have one thing with Roberta leaving this for you to appoint. Effective August 1st, Tori Mouser to City Clerk. She was assistant to the former City Clerk position. I'll make a motion to appoint Tori Mouser, City Clerk, for House of Representatives.
Second.
Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes. Did any of the department heads have anything that they want to? Looks like Christie does. Okay.
I was about to say that City Commissioner Alexie Moore has now officially attended her first concert in the arena.
I just want to know how the acoustics were.
Perfect. Those panels, I'm telling you, just the ones that we, I don't know if you've been in there, you saw, I don't know who all sing. Most of you are not personally a singer, but most of you, and I had sent Marilyn all of the stuff, all the pictures. My crew worked so hard last week and we got up about, almost, I think it was like 21 of them. So we have them all going back along on the side. They look sleek, they are custom-built, they're amazing. If you haven't been up there, see them, just sneak in there and look, they look so good. But just on the two shows that we had this weekend, you know, a lot of our issues are the talking, like being able to understand people talking to the microphone and everybody was, just what we've done so far is like super crisp. So I'm really excited about that. Now, the rest of my week was a little stressful. I've worked about, actually not about, I've worked over 15 hours a day since last Saturday. So I am wearing tennis shoes today, I apologize. Not an professional band, but I can. So I, but we had a lot of things, you know, like just starting to go down. Building's getting a little older and my sign's broken, our air conditioner broke. Like it was just one thing after another and I had these big shows. So this would be a really great time to filter in to say that this is a great time for those things to break down because as of last Thursday, I was officially granted a shuttered venue grant for $780,000. So I have until, that will go towards my equipment maintenance and, you know, utilities and stuff to help make up for some things that I could have done if we had had events last year. And I have until December 31st extended. So I have a nice little list. Thank you. I have a nice little list. As we've noticed, the process for this grant was like nightmare. So yeah, that was really exciting and so somebody was like, is it like some kind of like creepy like curse or something? I was like, no. I said, I feel like it was just, after I found that out, it was just the venue telling me what I needed to use some money on. So we're really blessed. Not only are we having the biggest year ever, you know, for the arena just in general, but now I have $780,000 to spend to upgrade all of the things and do all the things that we needed to do from the very beginning, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All good. All right, thank you Christie. Maggie, you're next.
Okay. Well, I don't have that kind of excitement. I'd love to say, yeah, I got a million dollar grant. That's okay, that's okay. I know. No, I'm super happy for you. I think that's amazing. So lots of exciting things going on in the city this month between the Tourism Commission and the Downtown Corbin Program. And it's been a very busy summer event season. All of our events have gone well and they've gone smooth. And, you know, we've seen record attendance, you know, record visitation to our offices and phone calls. So it's been a very successful summer season. So we're heavily into the fall planning season as we get ready for Egg Fest and the Half Marathon. Downtown is looking beautiful with all the flowers, thanks to the Health Works Department and the hard work that they do to keep downtown beautiful. So we've had some fun art projects. The Fire Hydrant in Colonel's Alley now looks like a bucket of chicken. And we recently, in true Corbin fashion, because we are such a loving city, had a kissing stone installed at the iconic Engineer Street Bridge. And right after that, someone proposed to their soon-to-be wife. So that's one of those warm, fuzzy, feel-good stories and we're just spreading the love everywhere, so. But I'm also excited to report that at Tuesday night's Tourism Commission meeting, the Tourism Commission voted to approve to hire a demo architect to drive the plans for the Farmer's Market Pavilion so that we can go ahead and release the RFP for that project. So I anticipate that to be on the fast track and for us to be able to open that for the next season. And then the KFC kiosk that we have been working with Toshiba on will be ready the first week of August. Unfortunately, I can't report when the KFC will reopen. Officials have not released a grand opening date, but of course we'll all be invited and it'll be a huge party, so. And I'll let you all know as soon as we hear about that. The restoration of the French Broad River went very smooth. We have just a few minor details to take care of to make that complete. And then I'm very excited to announce that at the end of this month, we will be needing to make forward movement on the Timberwicking Musical. So all good things, all great things going on in the city and we really appreciate your support and the partnership and we'll just keep traveling around. Thank you.
Thank you Maggie. Bruce, do you have anything? You all right? Okay. I can ask Donna Davis, and it looks like Melinda Norval's with us. You're just gonna sit there for, okay. Donna, would you like to come up?
Well, before I come up, I'd like to ask the state of the renovation for Miller Park. Depending on what the explanation is, I may or may not have anything to offer.
As of right now, it looks like it's going to be the end of October and November before we do anything about it.
And in particular, I was interested in the number of courts available. Pickleball in particular and tennis.
Tennis, there will be none. There will be one pickleball.
Okay, and I guess that's what I wanted to address then. Do I need to go over there?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, it's kind of sad to show up to a city council for the first time about pickleball, but here I am. If the decision has been made because of finances, I certainly understand. But if pickleball courts have been reduced to one, except for now these two that are behind the McBurney Center, I think we'll be missing out on opportunity for more community involvement. The pickleball courts have the dimensions over there on the, but there's a possibility of superimposing four pickleball courts and one tennis court. And a tennis court, I don't want to say the dimensions out loud because I'll get wrong. But it doesn't, it doesn't seem practical to just put in one pickleball court. I know the pickleball players will say, well, let's just forget tennis. But I was thinking of the head... But I was thinking of the heritage we have here in this region, sports-wise, and also this state, we have such good participation in tennis as a very small community, and thinking of the past with the community support, remember when the tennis courts at Miller Park were dedicated to Barry Freeman, and I think Lynn Tipton and some others went together for a memorial, and I guess I'm just thinking that that does a disservice to the community to abandon tennis altogether at Miller Park. The only non-private courts we have are at CHS, and those can't be superimposed with pickleball, I'm thinking because of KHSAA regulations providing for school sports. I understand the budget problems, but I would still like for you all to consider if not building more courts right away, at least saving space and planning for the future. Pickleball is growing at a faster rate than tennis is, but I don't think we need to forget our heritage as, as a tennis town these days. So just something to consider, and I know the budget is stressed at this time, but I'm thinking of future and the community involvement, it's for, not just for older people with bad knees, but it can accommodate, you know, thirteen-year-olds, we have men at the rec center who've been joining us lately, so I think the community is growing in most towns and resort areas who depend on tourism, have pickleball courts as a draw, another thing to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna.
I'm gonna pipe in.
I'll try to work it out, Melinda.
I can't help it.
I knew she was gonna leave her. I knew she brought it up, I was like, oh, there's something.
I'm Melinda Norbals. First of all, I want to thank you all for the two courts, for, first, for marking off at the rec center, the two courts, it's been really fun, and second of all, for the, for the, I guess it was approved today, for the extra being built behind the rec center. Thank you all, and I think it's gonna be a huge success. Pickleball is the number one fastest-growing sport in America. It's fun, I would help anybody who wanted to learn to play, I'd be glad to help them, but I think Marlon, what we were talking, what the idea is, would you just please look and see if we could keep a tennis court at Miller Park and potentially superimpose some pickleball on there? The dimensions, I wish I had them, I do not, but it's not gonna be that much bigger, and then we could have both, one, one tennis court and then several pickleball courts. So I'm just asking if you would see if that's feasible, and if that can fit into our budget.
I can talk to the architect and the contractor. Most of the sidewalks are going in right now as we're speaking, so.
Okay.
We're putting room in for parking too, so we just have to look at it, but I can talk to him and see.
I wish I had the dimensions, it's not that much more, and I think it could really just add more to it if we, if we have just a little extra space.
And we have some space across the civic center, out in front of it, that midfield there, that maybe we could look at that down, down the road.
In the future, yes. I just want to echo what Donna said about the history of Corbin, I grew up here playing tennis, and it's, it's hard when we have to share with Corbinites, but we don't have any place where we can, the oldies can go and play, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Melinda. All right, does anybody else want to address the commission?
Okay, now just, I forgot to tell you guys something else, new that I got. We, I also, we're no longer wanding at the front doors, because I have walk-throughs now, fancy, Garrett sixty-five hundred, Iowa, Marlon got to see them today, and they're really awesome.
So I bet it's going a lot faster now.
Super fast.
Great, that's awesome. Wonderful, great news, Christie. Awesome.
Mayor.
Alan is back.
I talked to Alan earlier. Alan, it is great to have you back.
Thank you.
I hope you continue to improve. We need you desperately.
Since we're on the subject of Alan, do you know when the next code enforcement board meeting will be?
It'll be the first Monday next month.
At what time?
Usually four.
Four. First Monday at four?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Did Barry, did we ask Barry?
Did we ask Barry what?
Did he, did he? I thought we just gave it away.
No. Well, I would like to request that we go into executive session. I make a motion.
Second.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Yes.
Moore? Here. Reeves?
Here.
Knuckles?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Radman?
Board of Commissioners, make the second session, adjourn the Paris six one eight ten one to discuss any litigation in personnel related to the opponent of this mess, or is this pending, pending, and a formal action statement.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Reeves?
Yes.
Knuckles?
Yes.
Shepherd? Moore?
Yes.
Radman?